Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order Monday, June 28th, 2021, 6:00 P. M. This is our budget hearing yearly meeting that we have. If everyone could rise with me. For the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone of the norms of collaboration, please. Sarah, roll call, please.
Okay, Brad Crandall.
Here.
John Forten.
Here.
Sarah Jones is here, Craig Corpola, Dana Wells Jenny.
Here.
Jeff Wolfersberger.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. 1.05 addenda. Does anyone have anything to add to?
I have something I would like to add.
Yes, ma'am.
The, um, so after hearing from some board members and community members, I'd like to make a motion to add to the consent agenda to end recording and live stream of all board meetings unless orders by the state require virtual meetings only.
Hmm, okay.
I would support that. I also think that was a bring up.
Any reason in particular other than, I mean, my thinking of or my doing or continuing it, I guess I should say, is we've had a lot of community members ask that it continue to be viewed so they can keep up with the things that we're doing.
Well, now that we are, I mean, we have our minutes and we have in-person.
Do we, do we have to vote on it before we discuss it?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, we gotta add it to the agenda.
It's a matter of whether we want to add it or not.
So he seconded it.
Okay, so Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah? Yes. Uh, Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Sure.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
3.02 will be discussion of video. I'm recording. Anything else to add to tonight's meeting? Uh, 2.01 comments from the public. We do not have any public here. 3.01, 2122 hiding behind the budget presentation.
So the budget hearing tonight, um, earlier than like the regular board meeting, is for the 2122 budget to go over and annually we have this hearing. I usually, in the past, have gone over the revision of the 2021 and just kind of did the whole budget presentation at this time and then we just vote on it, um, in their next meeting. The thing that I'd like, we went in, um, real depth of it at the committee of the whole meeting. So I was wondering if there wasn't any questions on the 2021, if we were okay not going over that in detail or do you want to go back over that in detail in any capacity?
I personally felt that you give a great explanation.
Okay. If that's okay with everybody, we'll just go with the 2122 and move forward with that.
Perfect.
Perfect. So this one there are four budgets that I will ask for approval tonight. The largest one being our general fund. Um, I did make a couple tweaks to this since we met at the committee of the whole meeting. One, the main one that I added and I, um, sent that, that communication out to you this afternoon. I'm not sure if everybody got a chance to look at that or not, but one of the items was in athletics. Um, they had asked for a new volleyball net system and that was about $17,000. And we originally had said, let's just hold off, um, and see how our numbers come in, what the state budget comes in and that. But with more talk that Mr. Simmons had, um, with Brett Steele, it was determined that that really isn't an item that we can hold off on. So I did go ahead and revise this budget and added that 17,000. That was a pretty big ticket item. I did go ahead and revise this and add this, um, into this budget. So if I take you down to the bottom here, we'll see where I'm asking you to approve a budget with a 2.6, um, million dollar deficit. Again, I'll go over that. Has a 2% salary increase for all staff, steps for teachers. It has $1,500 off schedule payment for teachers that were at the top of the scale. Um, benefits adjusted accordingly, so insurance, retirement and so forth. Um, this budget includes two full-time nurses. In this past year, we had about one and a half nurses, but bringing that, that second one up full-time. Um, it adds one new bus, two new vans, which we approved at a previous meeting, um, in 2021. It's just a timing thing gets pushed, um, to 2122. Same with the maintenance cargo van. Also a new high school sign. Uh, this has a foundational allowance increase of $250 per student. Um, there's still a lot of talk. We're hoping, fingers crossed, that maybe we'll have a budget on Wednesday. But, um, as everyone knows, we have to have our budget approved by June 30th, so that doesn't really help us in doing this budget. But we will for sure revise it to see, um, the House, uh, budget looks even more favorable than 250. So that would be great. Anything more than that is definitely going to help that, that 2.6. Um, and again, like I said, we can revise, um, we usually do it after student count, November, December. But we can look at that and if there's a need even before that, we can always do that before.
At that revision, do we have to be within a certain percentage of numbers we put forth in this budget?
No.
Okay.
Um, the student count I did with this budget was 1,956, um, .71. I know everybody always likes my .71 of a student, but, um, that's the, that's how we're paid and that's the student count. And that's pretty much, we hope that's the very, uh, worst case scenario for us and we hope that that's going to increase. But for this, at this time with not knowing what we just went with that case, we talked about that at the committee of the whole also. And this budget also includes one daytime custodian for each building. That's something that we did do this year. Actually, we had more than one per building, the bigger buildings. Um, we decided to keep that on for next year, at least for the first six months as we've extended that contract with High Tech for six months to see if it's really needed, what COVID is going to look like in the new year, just some of those types of things, just not know. We'd rather be prepared than not prepared. So this budget has, has that in it. Um, with that, that would leave us a total fund balance of almost 4 million. That's, um, 3.974, which is 14.78% of total expenditures. And this is 8.17% unassigned, which as we've talked about and before, the unassigned, that's, that's pretty low for unassigned. I mean, this is, I think where we're coming from here, 29, almost 30% to 15%. Again, we say worst case scenario, we're very hopeful that this is going to look a lot different, um, in the winter. Is there any questions that anybody had regarding it or anything that I went over, um, at the committee of the whole?
Well, I very much thank you for your presentation, uh, a couple of weeks ago and again tonight. Um, so just to be, uh, clear, um, a lot of our budget is payroll. Hence why we're kind of keep bringing it up in November. Um, we're going to attempt to keep everyone on payroll, hope that our headcount is up. Um, we'll see what virtual learning brings and whatnot, but, um, keep our fingers crossed. But if we needed to, uh, you know, cut some budget.
Right. We're definitely hoping not to, and even looking at that 2.6, that's pretty high to, to, to ask you to approve. But there's so many, this year, there's so many things that we just don't know that in a lot of variables that are like a, a big distance away from each other, just not knowing that. I, I wouldn't be comfortable recommending doing anything at this point that would reduce that. I think that we're going to be, um, I think we're going to receive more funds from the state at least. I mean, I don't, just definitely don't know what our student count will be, but from the state, I think there will be more funds received per FTE. So I'd definitely like to see that before we ever thought about going and trying to make some cuts to reduce that. I mean, that 2.6, we obviously don't want to end the year with that, but.
Sure. And I, I very much appreciate that. I guess what I was referring to is we could catch our budget fairly quick if our, if our headcount, if our numbers just aren't there. We could balance it out.
Yeah, there's things that we can do for sure. Yes. Any other questions on the general fund? Okay, this is the student service fund. So this is all like the student activities, the class accounts. Um, we manage this money, but really as far as, um, the class advisors or, um, the club advisors, they're the ones that really manage the money. I mean, we hold on to it. We cut the checks, you know, and deposit the funds. But because it is in our possession, we do have to approve a budget. So this is a very, very simple budget, just shows the revenue coming in, the expenditures, expenditures coming out. Um, fund balance, it would have this 195, that's still class accounts that move forward. I mean, not all classes spend all their money each year or same with like drama club or choir or band or there's, um, athletic accounts in there too that are like their fundraising accounts and stuff like that. So, um, this is all restricted money. This is all their money, whatever the, the fund is or, or, um, activity. This is their money that, that they have, but it's just a budget that needs to be approved at the beginning of the year. Any questions regarding this? This again is another real small budget, but this is our student scholarship budget. This is, we hold a handful of scholarships, um, in district that are awarded out to the seniors, um, in the spring each year. And this revenue probably mainly this is from, for the jeans scholarship that employees donate, um, money to wear jeans on Fridays. So, and then that, that goes on scholarships and then these are just the scholarships that will pay out in the year. Again, this is restricted money, this 40,000, it's sitting in there, um, solely for the scholarships, the different scholarships. And so as those are awarded out, this comes down as we receive money in for those scholarships that, that could increase too. Any questions? All right, you guys are easy to.
Oh, you're just that good at this.
And our last one is our food service budget. Um, this one, um, is, uh, this is all food service. So food service, uh, they receive their own funding. They have their own expenses, everything out there. They are, uh, very healthy, very self-sustaining. There are some districts within the state that aren't, that the general fund has to do transfers. And as long as I've been here, Penfield has never been in that situation and we hope that it, that it stays that way. Um, the one thing I would explain here, this, you'll see I, in this budget, I'm asking with a $251,000 deficit, that is because we have too much fund balance in this fund and we need to spend it down. The state, um, tells us how much we can have in total for fund balance. And if we don't spend it down, um, on something, and it has to be something in food service. If we don't spend it down, then they would cut our reimbursement rate and we don't want that to, to happen. So we are, um, as we talked, the middle school cafeteria is getting renovated. So that's going to be painted. There's going to be new, a new floor plan, new decals. It looks really sharp. I'm, I'm excited to see it once, once that gets done. Um, we, um, there's some other things, like we had purchased some ovens, but I'm working with, um, Laura, um, who's our acting food service director in making sure that we have a plan to have that, that spent down and is trying to move, uh, forward with that.
Awesome.
And again, those are restricted funds too, but they, not, that can't be used for anything other than just for the food service. Is there any questions with that? That's all, I, oh, I have one other thing. Uh, I think I mentioned it at the committee of the whole, but in this whole document that was the resolution, there was the, um, the millage that we're asking to be levy for the taxes, that, um, 18 mills is the operating and that's our normal. And then also you'll see, um, in our regular board meeting in the consent agenda that L4029 for the debt services, that 10.6 levy for debt that we are asking to be, and that's the other item that will be asked, um, for our program. Other than that, without any other questions, that's all that I have for the budget hearing. Um, again, I've, yeah, all the stuff I've put on the consent agenda, um, for the regular board meeting for our program.
Awesome.
Anybody have anything for me?
Thanks, Gina. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. No action to be done there. As that will be on our board meeting at 6:30 for approval. Uh, 3.02 discussion of video recording of board meetings. Would you like to get us started since you brought this to us?
I brought this to the attention of the board because of talking to fellow board members and community members. And, um, they don't see the need for this since we are no longer virtual only. And to go back to full in-person, um, we're available for everyone to come. The minutes are always and have always been available for the public to read. And then, um, you know, if the state is to require virtual only meetings, then we would go back to record for the virtual only meetings.
Okay. Um, I guess my question would be is there was some examples of not to do it. Would there be some examples to continue to do it? I mean, why, why now? Not to, to just stop it, I guess. I mean, we've, we've done this now for a year and a half and.
The same reason we don't wear the mask and, you know, we're going back to
Real life.
our norm and that was the norm before COVID.
Yeah.
I think there's only been maybe a dozen or so people watching at times. But the people watching, I think there's a tendency for people to watch to pick things apart. It definitely limits discussion in here if you're not comfortable with, you know, we're almost all brand new on this board.
I understand. There'll be mistakes made.
And people are, you know, you can tune in here and there, easily take things out of context. Tune in in the middle of a discussion, don't even know what, what it was about. And then, you know, it just gets, starts the gossip wheel in the, in the community without people being here basically hearing what actually happened or, you know, working a little harder to find out the truth rather than looking through a, you know, YouTube video for what they, what they're looking for.
Sure, sure. Um, I mean, me, I, I totally understand what you're saying. Um, other than the fact of, um, the amount of viewers actually watching at that particular moment in time. Yes, totally agree, very few. Um, I would ask to go back and look at some of the videos that are on there. I have, um, as of right now, they're only on there for 30 days and then they're being deleted. So, um, ones that are still on there within that 30 days, you go back and look and there's hundreds of views. Um, so may not, you know, community member, somebody may not be able to get on right at 6:30 and watch the entire meeting and so on and so forth, but I, I know a lot of people are going back and, and viewing the meeting. Um, I think it's a nice thing. Um, transparency is, is a word that has been brought to, you know, this boardroom several, several times. Um, I mean, it's a way for us to be transparent and, and work with our community. And, I mean, like I said, I, I know everybody's probably heard different, you know, views or whatnot, but I've, I've heard a lot of people that like the idea of, of, it's a convenience, yes. I, I would like to see them in here also, but, um, you know, we all have lives and families and, and so on and so forth. Um, I guess I just, I don't see the harm in it and I would like to continue to, I would like to continue to do it.
I also think that, um, having a recorded live stream and being able to share it and can create a form of cyber bullying. Um, I've also had community members say, oh, did you see what happened at dot, 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 dot? You know, tune in. So I just, I feel like everyone is welcome here. It's good to come and be in the building and be in person. If we need to be virtual, then we can be virtual, but right now we're proving that we can be in person, be healthy, be safe. And that's my reason for bringing it to the board. So do I have to make a motion to have this voted on?
You would, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to, has everyone said any, anyone else have anything?
You can still make a motion and discuss it.
Yeah, I wanted to touch on what Jeff touched on is the transparency. Do we feel, you know, that's a big thing we hear from our community is communication and transparency. So I'm kind of concerned, and I've heard the same thing, that people would like the live stream to stop, but I've also heard people say that like it. Is anybody concerned that we're not being transparent even though the very next thing that comes up, we're going to say we want transparency?
No, because I think Sarah does a great job of taking notes. Um, I mean, she does, you know, minutes, excuse me, I have noticed minutes. I probably use a little more. Um, I think she does a great job and I think that as long as we publish them and we're not being untransparent. I mean, these, these are open meetings. The, the governor is open to state. There's all the restrictions are lifted. We're not saying, don't come to our meetings. It's an open meeting. Everyone's welcome, uh, anytime. So we're not being, we're not, not being transparent. We're, we actually welcome the public to come to our meetings.
I guess I would, I can see both sides of it. I can see where it becomes cyber bullying. I can see where it allows people. I, I guess I would like to hear from the people that are watching it, like, you know, what's their reason for watching it? Are, are they still in fear and they're not ready to come back in person and they feel more comfortable watching it at home? Um, is, you know, is that, you know, they were never attending and now they can attend and they really like it? I would want to hear some perspective on that.
Sure, sure. I mean, just a personal note, I know, um, I'm not sure the date, but we, I say we as a, as in, um, um, home office had posted a, uh, I think it was our training or whatnot. Um, anyhow, a medium was posted on the, on the Facebook page and it did not say live and it did not have a link to it. And I mean, immediately there was, why isn't it live? Why isn't it, why isn't it being recorded? Why isn't it? Um, you know, I, I can't help but kind of touch on the timeframe of we had an embarrassing moment and now all of a sudden we want to take video away.
No, I, I brought this to Kevin's attention before this. It's not a new thing. In fact, I think I even had the discussion with you at some point in time. I don't want it to be viewed as a result of last week. I'm just saying what I have heard is both sides. I've heard both sides, but the majority of people that I've talked to feel that it is being viewed and reviewed and reviewed and reviewed for the hot topics. And I just don't feel like that is healthy for our community or our district.
And you say that and the next thing I think of is the amount of questions the night of or the next day of, you know, what was the board meeting about? What was this about? What was, um, you know, again, I, we all talk to different. And that's one thing I think, I, I love this board on the demographic of, of where we all, um, our backgrounds and so on and so forth. Um, I love everyone's opinion. Um, I just think in a, in the time that we're in, um, and, uh, the convenience. I mean, I honestly, I've, I've said it a few times when I've chosen to stay with the video is the convenience. Um, for our, you know, for our district, for our parents, for, you know, anybody that wants to know what's going on in Penfield that may not be able to make it here at, at 6:30 on the second, third Monday of every month. So, I mean, I, again, I, I do, I see it both ways. I think it's, it's far more beneficial for our, our district right now, in, in my opinion.
Well, I would make a motion then to, to stop them after tonight's meeting. Um, that way people have the notice to know that this will be our last broadcast meeting and then moving forward after tonight's meeting that if they, uh, want to, um, be a part of the meetings and then they know that they're available, the, there's going to be a committee of the whole, which is more discussion and then there's going to be a board meeting and they're all, their dates are all out there and they're open to the public there because of the Opens Meeting Act. And so my meeting, my motion would be that tonight will be the last night that we broadcast live our board meetings.
When, when is our next meeting? It's, uh, two weeks from?
July 12.
July 12. Okay. So that's plenty of notice.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have two motions on the floor.
Dawn didn't make a motion.
Yeah, she stopped.
She stopped before she made the motion. I made the motion.
Because you asked a question.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. Any other questions or concerns or anything? And did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Then whenever you're ready, we'll take a vote on a motion to end, uh, videoing and live streaming after tonight's meeting.
Okay, I'll start with Sarah. I'm going to say no. Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Tim?
No.
Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Motion and still me? I will double check on that, but I think it has to be a discussion item on the next meeting. Don't. Don't clarify, don't quote me on that, but we'll have to go to the next meeting until the lock is broken for discussions, so...
And before we discuss it again, I'd just like to hear from people who've had my influence.
For sure.
What I say.
Absolutely, sure.
Anybody who has an opinion about that, let us know.
I don't know if you could comment below, but comment below. Sure, I mean, if you guys don't mind, if anybody would go to our, the Penfield Schools Facebook page, do you mind?
No, I think that'd be great.
We have the meeting posted for tonight. If you guys will put a comment in there on whether you'd like to continue watching the the livestream or recording, we'll call it a recording, or not. Kind of get some feedback. Fair enough? All right. 4.01 comments from the public. We have some public?
Where do I go? I never know.
This isn't the regular board meeting.
Correct, so it is, so it is an open meet?
It is an open meeting.
Okay. So for clarification, it is an open meeting. This is, if you would like, you have a chance right now to talk.
About budget stuff, okay.
It doesn't have to be about budget. At 6:30, we will start our traditional board meeting and you will also have an opportunity at the beginning of that to, thank you. No comments from the public? All right. Comments from the superintendent?
None at this time.
Thank you, sir. Comments from the board? Yes, sir?
Piggybacking on the stalemate of the last vote, the issue with the board attendance. Are we in a concerned place there or...
This is for comments and not questions and answers, but I will be more than happy to discuss that with you. Absolutely. Any other comments from the board? I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. It's 6:29 and we will start our traditional meeting at 6:24 or 6:34, I can add. 6:34, we'll take a quick five minutes recess and we'll start our traditional board meeting at 6:34. Thank you. Good evening again. I'd like to call this meeting to order, Monday, June 28, 2021, 6:34 PM. This is our traditional board meeting. We have companies who would like to go ahead and do pledge allegiance again. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to apologize, that's twice this evening. I have my hat on and nobody said anything. I am so sorry. I, I apologize, I'm embarrassed. Will not happen again. I feel bad. Sorry. 1.03, roll call, Sarah, if you would, please.
Brad Crandall?
Here.
Dawn Porter?
Here.
Sarah Jones, here. Craig Cortola?
Here.
Dana Wells-Jenny?
Here.
Jeff Wolfersberger?
Here.
Tim Wood?
Here. Seven members, thank you very much. Welcome back, Craig. 1.04, norms of collaboration. Like, remind everybody of those. 1.05, addenda. Does anyone have anything to add or remove from tonight's?
I would like to have 5.07 removed from the agenda per our policy number PO 0167.3 and a conversation I had with Brad Balnasek, who is the who is the legal team at M A S B and a conversation I had with him. We cannot add to our agenda any type of complaint. If somebody has a complaint, they must come and speak at public comments and we cannot legally add it to our agenda. So I make a motion to remove 5.07 from our agenda. And that's in our bylaws. It's our own policy and I spoke to the legal team at M A S B.
So this is news to me. If you would, next time, please inform me before a meeting. Professionalism, please say it. Second, the only thing I have on this is Jay Bennett, our attorney, will be here at 8 o'clock. I asked him to be here a little bit later with the rest of the agenda. I obviously have several conversations with him and at no point in time has this came up. I would ask as of right now to leave it on there. We can always table it.
It's our own policy. Anyone with concerns related to the operation of the schools or matters within the authority of the board may participate during the public portion of our meeting. It's our own policy. We are a policy board. We need to follow our own policy or we're setting a precedent and it's a slippery slope, which means any time that anyone sends any type of email at all to our board, we have got to put it on our agenda or we are setting a precedent. We need to remove this from our agenda.
So if I might add?
Please.
President Wolfersberger, in this case, then maybe what we want to do is eliminate that, but it would include someone in public comment bringing up the topic. That would be a way in which we could honor the spirit of information being gathered by the board, but at the same time then put that on the agenda for the next time we get together.
And just nitpicking our policy, and I didn't speak to the lawyer, so I could be 100% wrong.
Right.
But it says, anybody with concerns related to the operation of the schools or matters within the authority of the board may participate. It doesn't say they have to participate.
Yeah, so what, basically what this means after speaking with Brad, that if somebody has a complaint about anyone on the board, they, if it needs to come and be put on our agenda, they need to address the school board, they need to come and speak at public comments. And that's under public participation at board meetings. If you look at the top, under the title of this particular policy in our bylaws. I mean, I didn't know if this was going to be put on the agenda. I mean, like, so I didn't know I needed to address you with everything that...
When did, when did 507 get put on? When I reviewed yesterday, I didn't see it. Did I miss it?
5.07 is...
It's on, I printed notes on Friday and it was on there.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Well, it says complaint regarding public officer, which I did reach out to Jeff to ask him what that even meant because I didn't even, you know, there was no attachment or anything of the complaint or or a know of what it was pertaining to.
Okay. I emailed you back two minutes after I received it?
Right, I'm just saying people, like, they may have viewed this and not understood what it was or something, you know. I didn't share it out beyond myself.
So it's, I mean, it's, do you want me to rename 5.07 as a violation of 3362 or 336201? Is that what you would rather of me of?
I'm not going to dispute at the board table.
No, I was just asking a question.
I do feel that an attachment of what it was pertaining to and who it was pertaining to would have been informative to the board for some understanding of that line item.
I'm just going to refer back to my addenda to please remove 5.07 from tonight's board meeting. If somebody would like to come speak, they can do so in open meetings.
So just make sure I've got my head around it. 507 is a complaint from the public about one of our board members.
Yes.
Is this the, the letter that we were emailed?
Not necessarily, I mean, it's...
It could be about any, it could be about anything. That's what this policy is about.
Correct, correct. So once again, let me reiterate. I actually sat trying to finalize the agenda and trying to make it as nice as possible on the agenda instead of putting a violation, possible violation of two board members from policy 3362 or 336201.
Well, let's make one thing really clear. You can't combine two, two board members into one. That would have had been, that would have been two separate things on the agenda. So let's be clear on that first of all. And second of all, a complaint, according to Brad, we don't even have to address the complaint unless they come physically in and talk to us. It is a slippery slope because otherwise every complaint that we are faced with as board members, again, we have to put on our agenda. I am just following policy. We are a policy board. Correct, am I right?
Yep, and I would love it if everyone stayed the policy.
Okay, so then based on that, then we need to remove our agenda this evening.
And I would ask to leave it with our attorney coming in. Again, we can always table it and remove it. So I, that's, that's my only, I don't know. So alls I know is, is our attorney will be here at 8 o'clock.
You just said you wanted us to follow policy, that's against policy. If you want to add something else completely different with our attorney, then that's something that you need to add, but this is completely...
I'm not adding anything.
You just said you wanted to table it because of our attorney.
I'm asking to leave it on there for right now. It's at the end of our agenda. Our attorney will be here as my guest for 5.06 and 5.07 is what he plans on being here for. If we get to that point and he says no, then we still have the ability to table it and not discuss it. Nothing against Brad at M A S B. I am going to take what our true attorney is going to say over, over Brad. So I would give our attorney the opportunity to explain and make the suggestion when he gets here. I was trying not to take up too much of his time this evening. So there's a motion on the table. I do not hear a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second. And I don't need a motion to just leave it, so there's no sense in making another motion.
So we're voting to remove 507?
The motion on the table is to remove 5.07.
Can we state what 507 says openly right now just so we know what we're voting for?
Anyone with concerns related to the operation of the school or to matters within the authority of the board may participate during the open, excuse me, during the public portion of the meeting. It's the policy that I just handed you a copy of.
And 5.07 says complaint regarding public officer.
Correct. Motion on the table to remove 5.07 from tonight's meeting. Sarah, whenever you're ready, please.
Dawn?
If I could ask?
Sure.
Would we be assuming, I think, the way we're looking at this, would we be assuming that this issue would go away? I think we had to ask ourselves that question because if we don't tend to let this be, it'll be in two weeks. We are expecting our attorney in a couple of hours or an hour and a half, whatever it might be. So this issue becomes, is it a matter of us dealing with it now or dealing with it in two weeks? And I believe we're talking about having a discussion about the topic, right?
Correct.
Before we actually have a vote. So I think that's kind of, I understand where you're coming from, Dana, completely, but I think that's kind of the practical aspect of governance that we also have to consider.
Well, I think one of the things, what this is stating is we, I mean, technically, unless somebody physically comes here and wants to discuss it, we don't, we don't, we can just let it go. That's what this is stating, that's what our policy is stating.
Well, I assure you that I am not just going to brush behavioral matters under the rug. It is my job as the board president of Penfield School District to bring matters like this to the board. I know it's uncomfortable. I know.
Jeff, you are the president because we chose you to be pregnant president. It does not give you more power, it gives you more responsibility.
Correct, it's my job.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean like you get to be like a dictator. Let's remember that.
I think we're following procedure pretty well. I do like what Craig's saying. But I do, I do feel that inadvertently, this is...
But I do, I do feel that inadvertently, this is going to avalanche somebody. You know, this is going to be a personal discussion. It's obvious that, as well being as the intent was, that they're being ambushed, you know? And I don't think that was the intent. I, I think that's what inadvertently has happened. So, you know, I, I think what Craig's saying is, yeah, we are going to have to deal with this, but I, I think there's a time and a place in a way, and probably tonight, without the parties being prepared, it's probably not the way to do it, especially in a public forum.
I did answer the question last Thursday, so I'm sure there should have been both prepared. And as a reminder, I will touch on the subject of, um, a board member passed along information, which I passed along to the entire board, that this does follow, um, an opportunity to go to closed session. So if you don't want to talk about it in public session, you can also ask to go to closed session also. So with that being said, if anybody has anything else? Motion on the.
My opinion, any of these kind of discussions should take place in closed session regarding board members.
I don't think so.
People that are, you know, employees, people's names, you know, we have to vote to go to closed session and we need to, we vote to discuss a specific thing.
Absolutely.
One thing.
Absolutely.
That. I just think, you know, this going on right here, you know, is to be avoided somehow.
I'd appreciate it.
So whatever we need to do to get there, it's not what we're doing right now.
I'm just doing my job. I haven't voiced my personal opinion at any point in time. Um, th- this is my job. I've been directed by our attorney that I have to bring these matters to the board. And if I'm the one to get beat up on, then I'll get to be a lot, so.
If we pulled it, if we pulled this off the agenda right now, will there be a role for the attorney to come tonight?
He still needs to explain 3362 and 3362.01. What we discussed in the, as far as the 336201, um, in the committee of the whole. He is going to come in, um, and explain the questions that we had.
So we could remove 507 and still get our questions asked during 506?
Two different things. 5.06 is directing the policy 336201.
Okay.
5.07 is the assumption of violation of 3362.
Kind of can't have one without the other, so seems like we could still ask the questions.
Correct. So if we could have a vote to remove 5.07 from tonight's meeting.
Okay, Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah, I'm gonna vote no. Craig?
No.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
5.07 is removed from tonight's meeting. Anybody else have anything to add or removed from tonight's meeting?
5.04, superintendent, uh, the formal update. I shared the timelines with the board. And if you will look at the six month timeline, this is from the M A S B and the actual superintendent, uh, evaluation tool. This is like page, this is the third page from the back. Um, under checkpoint, we went through the three month, which was the informal update. But if you're looking at this six months, Ian, it says a formal update. Says the superintendent provides an update on progress along with available evidence prior to convening a meeting in public. Board president collects questions from the board and provides to the superintendent prior to the meeting. So we're actually ahead of a step instead of actually going through this process in a manner which is spelled out. It also says the board and superintendent discuss the progress and make adjustments of, to the course or goals if needed. So I'm actually a step ahead because the presentation I was gonna give wasn't, uh, after getting feedback from the board from the president in order to give that feedback. So it wouldn't be logical for me to do that in the public forum at this time.
5.04?
Did I say it right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
04, yes, 04, 5.04.
So are we tabling that until July?
Okay, yes, until July.
I need a mo, I need a motion to do so.
Um, I will make a motion to table, uh, the formal update on the superintendent evaluation until the July, is committee of the whole meeting?
Committee of the whole.
Okay.
Second, ma'am?
Seconded by Craig. Any discussion on it? Sarah, if you would, please.
Okay, I'll start with Sarah. I say yes. Craig?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
5.04 is tabled to July, when, 12th? Thank you. 2021? And is removed from tonight's agenda. Anyone else have anything? All right, 2.01, comments from the public. Do we have any public here? Did our public fill out our form?
I don't think we had any.
Yeah, we didn't have the form.
We didn't have any forms today.
We used to do them electronically whenever we were doing it online, but we will get that form to the public so that we know how to answer back questions.
Hello, ma'am.
Right here?
Please state your.
Sure.
How much?
You want to use a microphone?
Not really.
Like, I gotta use a microphone so it goes through the.
I've got.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, all right. Okay.
For clarification, could you please state your name?
I will, yes. Erin Lane, I am the administrative director at Battle Creek Christian Early Learning Center, so I'm here as a community member, um, this evening. Um, I, a little bit of backstory, um, I feel will be helpful moving forward, um, what I want to discuss. But in the fall of 2019, Jane Haddock, the former Purdy principal, approached me in regards to having Battle Creek Christian take over the before and after school program, um, at Penfield. We had a lot of back and forth discussion, I had a lot of questions. Um, and then in the late, I'm not sure exactly the timeframe, but, or the time, the date, but late winter, early spring of 2020, um, I sat down and met with Jane, Kevin Simmons, Jackie, and Gina, um, I think that's it, there might have been other people there, I don't, I don't really remember. Um, and then again, we talked more and discussion about it. Um, I had questions for them, um, Kevin had questions for me and Jane. Um, at the end of the meeting, Kevin was in favor of us taking over the program pending my board, my board's approval. Um, so I had to take back this information to my board. Yes, no? Um, uh, later that month, Jane reached back out to me after my board meeting and I had gotten the green light to move forward. Um, therefore Jane closed Penfield's license and I began the process of opening the new license. So I applied for the new license with the state, I started all the planning and prep work required by licensing, including the on-state environmental inspection, purchased equipment, um, and then of course COVID hit, so then as the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year approached, there was some concern about children attending the before and after school program, being in different pods and then going to their classes. Anyway, there was a lot of concern about that with all the restrictions and everything, so I decided we will just house the program at our center. Um, and then move back to Purdy once the restrictions lifted or the kids went back to school full time. Um, and I still continue to offer, um, the Penfield teacher discount at that point. That was part of our arrangement, so that was a big discount that the teachers received. Um, this April, I reached out to Kevin regarding, um, the, an incident in the 2021, 22 school year. Um, he scheduled a phone conference with me on April 27th, which concluded with him or Sarah Taylor getting back to me. That's how we left it. Um, two weeks later, I reached back out because I had not heard from either one of them. Um, Kevin did respond that day saying he did talk to Sarah and will reach back out to her. Again, two weeks later, I received an email from Kevin saying, after careful consideration and in-depth conversations with my administration staff, I've decided that we will not be offering before and after school daycare services for the 2021, 22 school year. Um, that email became as a shock, as a was unexpected response. I replied the same day, um, requesting an explanation to which I have not received a reply yet. Um, there was a lot of sense of planning and money that went into preparing for this program, um, developing the new site, new inspection, or new licensing paperwork, inspections, software management system purchase, policies and procedures planned and created, financial pit, planning, budgeting. Um, and while I cannot recruit the time that me and my board exhausted putting into the preparation, I am requesting for the licensee health inspection and the software management system, that those costs were specifically incurred, um, incurred for that program. Um, I requested an instruction on how to move forward with that request from Kevin, again, still no response. Um, that is my concern, um, or what I wanted to bring to the board is just, there was an agreement in place, they got taken away with essentially no explanation. So, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Any other comments from the public? Uh, thank you. Uh, consent agenda, 3.01, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
3.02, a couple things. First of all, 3.02 at the top, we've got that Dr. Corporal is absent. And then at the bottom, we've got Dr. Corporal's seconded emotion.
I think I revised those.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you have some, like, some telepathy or something. That's the one that's still attached?
I, I did revise it in the one I sent you on Friday.
Yep, I didn't connect.
I caught that on there.
I didn't attach the right one.
Also, after speaking with, um, Brad, the closed session portion of that meeting that was illegally closed sessions do not have the shield of confidentiality and all of the minutes from that closed session need to be added to that, that those minutes need to be added before we can approve them, because they can be foiled at any time. So all the minutes from that closed sessions need to be added before we can approve those minutes. So I guess I would make a motion to table approving the consent agenda until we, um, get updated, or at least remove 3.02 from the consent agenda and approve the rest of the consent agenda?
I'll second that motion.
I can't vote on it, but I'd be.
So the motion is to remove?
3.02.
Let it go. I think it's important that we go with the rest of it, because people want this calendar.
Yes, absolutely. 3.02 needs to be removed until tabled and, um, until the committee of the whole, and then we can approve the, that once we have the rest of the corrections made.
Um, may I ask if you would be interested in changing your motion to adding what was discussed in closed session and go ahead and approve, so we can approve these minutes for tonight, so we can get, continue on with?
That's what you said, we need to take out 3.02, approve everything else, table that until the committee of the whole, and then once everything gets added, then we can approve those. Everything else can get approved.
But that's not what you're saying.
You're asking to go ahead and approve it, knowing that we're getting it added.
Right. And you said yes, but.
How can you approve it? You can't approve it before you add it. You have to wait. You have to wait until it's been added. You can't go back and forth. It needs to be pulled. That's the.
Okay, the motion on the table is to move, remove 3.02 from the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sarah, if you would, go ahead and take a vote, please.
Okay, Craig?
Uh, consent to say no, because I wasn't here.
All right, Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Sure.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
I wasn't here either, should I vote on that or no?
You're required to vote.
You are required to vote, so.
Okay, Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah, yes.
3.02 will be pulled from the consent agenda.
I think the wording should be tabled until the next meeting.
3.02 will be pulled from the consent agenda. It will be tabled to July 12th, 2021, with the added minutes of discussion. 3.01, 3.03, 3.04, 5, 6, and 7. Anyone have any?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
I second.
Am I mistaken that we did have a vote on the removal?
We did, we did.
We did.
Nine left here.
I need some oxygen underneath there.
You caught me, I'm like, what? Um, motion seconded, I think we can go ahead with the vote, Sarah, please.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah? Yes. Craig? Dana? Oh, sorry, guys, get everybody. I went back around again.
You missed me.
Oh, Tim, sorry.
Yes.
Oxygen, company.
Sarah, can use the two of us.
The consent agenda minus 3.02 is approved. Uh, 4.01, items removed from the consent agenda will now be 3.02, which is tabled to July 12th, 2021, pending amendment. And uh, procedure. Moving on, 5.01, bond certification action. Mr. Simmons?
Yes, we have, um, page two, but I'm gonna, instead of my explaining that it's the next step for moving forward in bond, I'm gonna ask that we have, uh, Mr. Atkins, Rob, and Jay, if they come up and just explain what it is that, um, this step recalls and what it goes with it. Can you do that, sir?
Yes, I can.
Awesome.
You might do, you want me to?
Oh, yeah, because then, then the public can hear the voice coming over the microphone.
Okay.
So yes, please.
Thank you, everyone. Um, Rob Atkins with King Scott, so I'm here to, uh, help you with this next step on the bond application. So, um, just simply put, you're basically approving the bond app and submittal to treasury. We've gone through the review process with treasury. All the i's have been dotted, the t's have been crossed. Um, all the numbers from your financial consultant are all accounted for in the bond app. On that certificate page, you'll see there's five basically bullet items. That's basically your motion tonight, and that's the action you're taking tonight. So if you, um, I can read those if you would like, or each board member I see has a copy of that.
This is opportunity for questions.
Yes.
Page two.
Anyone have any?
Yeah, it is.
Is that, this is how it would, uh, appear on the ballot, right?
The, um, so the third page of the bond app is the actual wording.
The bonding proposal?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what was drafted by your attorneys, which. And that's what was drafted by your attorneys, which is required to be part of this application. And, um, I can add too, this isn't calling the election, that'll be the next step, and that'll be, and I believe your July 19th meeting is what the attorneys have scheduled. So, again, this is just to take the next step in the treasury process with your application. So hopefully that helps.
Did Chris say he could make it to 19th?
What's that?
Did Chris, I am, I am Monto.
Well, he, I'm, I'm Reno.
I'm trying to pronounce his last name, sorry.
Yeah, I'm Reno.
I'm Reno, yes.
I know hi- his office will provide a formal resolution
Okay.
that you guys can act on, um, whether he can be here or not.
Yes, it's supposed to be, um, the committee of the whole of August. I think we need to ask that that be, uh, a voting board meeting, and then it was coming there.
Well, he sent, he sent me an email and said that will work, when I said it was the 19th.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I was asking, did you get that same email? Because he made it sound like he can get it on the 19th instead on the 19th.
Oh, he did.
Yep.
Yeah, he had said that, yeah, he had said that that was quick of a turnaround.
So I was gonna say, that's the last we talked is turning the committee of the whole because we needed to address this, so.
And then he sent an email later asking me what the date was, and then I told him, I said, yeah, the last regular board meeting is the 19th of July. We were gonna move August the 9th, we're gonna bring it to the board and ask to make it a board meeting, and then he said, so the 19th, that works, he said, that works, thank you, Kevin. So I was like, okay, does that mean you're good on the 19th or not?
I think he is.
I think he, that's what it sounded like. He's saying that he's gonna be ready on the 19th.
Yeah.
Which is what I asked before, and we wouldn't have to change it, the August the 9th. Okay?
If not, we'll address it when it comes. I mean, I don't, I personally don't see a any issue of changing the committee of the whole if, if need be, so we'll hope for the 19th and go from there. Awesome.
So this is an action item?
I'll be in motion that we adopt this action item.
I'd second that. Thank you, gentlemen. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Sarah.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah, yes. Craig?
All right.
Dana?
Yes.
Simple as that, motion passes.
So I have eight copies with me, and Sarah, I need your signature. And then, um, Sarah, I'll leave you a number of copies. Two have to be overnighted to Truun, to I'm Reno tomorrow. So, yeah, so if you coordinate, but I have all the copies I can. You wanna bring those, Ryan?
Thanks for joining us, Jay.
Ryan, would you?
Ryan? Your mom probably said maybe you shouldn't be Jay.
Think she'll do an agenda item for rubber stain.
Crack his hand for when I write a book someday.
There you go.
Right.
So I will leave you two overnight. One is the school's property, and then we give you extra insurance.
Okay.
Okay? And then I'll distribute the rest. Oh, I'm sorry. And one for, uh, the financial consultants. This is the
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm just gonna do.
You wanna write that down? You're gonna write that down, okay.
It's right on the page, page it has what.
They're good. They're good. Are you all set with us on that? I'm gonna assume so.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, moving right on, 5.02 ECOL confirmation. Mr. Simmons, who have you brought with us tonight?
Jerry is here for the final, uh, ECOL presentation.
We are certainly hoping. This is number nine this year, and I think we had two others the year before, and you may get a two-day report in the future. I'm not sure what they're gonna do with our last couple of days, but everything we're hearing from MZE is that, uh, this is the last one, so. Good news is, um, this report compared to the month before is much higher numbers, much better connectivity with the kids. We had kids that were coming in and out. Um, if you take a look at the left-hand column at the bottom, it explains why numbers may be lower. Um, for example, one of those weeks that we're reporting on tonight was Memorial Day was part of that week. So with one day less, our numbers were down a little bit with vacations starting early. And more importantly, three of those weeks, we no longer had seniors. So that dropped our population by 112th and actually 113th, and we, um, our numbers looked a little different if you saw them holistically. So, um, we are required to give a couple sentences here, and the first is that, uh, the reconfirmation hearing is required every month as, um, part of our return to learn plan that originated in September. These numbers also are to reflect the number of questions or inputs online to the survey that we gave to the community. And I did, um, document public comments. You can see that about midway there on how many we had, or in this case, did not have. Um, our numbers were great. The principals were, um, um, the key in making sure that the adults were able to document, um, two-way interaction with students in a way that allows, um, Trevor and I to make sure that we're legal in the way that we cover attendance. So, um, it was, if I say it's a team effort, it's not a cliche in this case. It's, it's me watching numbers, Trevor thumping them with what the protocols are, and the principals running herd on them and making sure it gets done. And to be honest, they, the teachers were wonderful. They were all over this. So we do have these numbers. They're in the 90th percentile. The state of Michigan's expectation was 75%. We were never, ever in the 70s. We were in the 80s a couple times when we had an outbreak, especially, um, at Dunlap. But we never approached the 70 percentile of anything. So kudos to Penfield. I stand reported, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those the best I can.
Jerry, thank you for this, this whole, it was painful, but appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, yeah, and believe me, once the template was made, um, by, by month five, I had.
By month five, here, our card.
No question? Thank you.
Jerry, you do such an awesome job. I apologize, I was just texting Ray, just let him know that we're a little bit ahead of schedule. And yes, I hope that's the last ECOL as well. 5.03, final read, 56, policy 5610, non-instructional hours. Kevin, you can kinda help me out with this. We're actually advised not to.
Yeah, I was hoping Ray would be here by now, because his office, I attached an email after I'd already attached the policy and the wording change. And the email says that there's already a policy that actually says that you don't have to take intent and that you, um, um, have the authority to give a consequence based on the violation. So that it's not one size fits all, but to have that discussion based on the policies that we have. And that's kinda the way it reads in this email.
Did he say where that what already was in our policies?
You know what, let me read this email again.
I mean, if we already have a policy, we just don't, we don't need redundancy.
I don't think it was necessarily that we had a specific policy. It's, I, I think the matter of taking the intent part. And again, going back to the.
And let you know, it is worded, okay, for approval. The policy is a revision due to a group of stu-, oh, that's mine.
I was gonna say, you're reading your own writing.
My own email. Let me go down. He asked me to respond to the question below. Don't re-, he don't recommend adding the highlighted language to your policy. The factors listed, oh, because there are statutory requirements, we have to do that. And before suspending or expelling any student, the school must consider those seven factors, which is A through G.
So they're saying not to add H and I?
Yes.
So it doesn't matter if it happens during instructional hour or if there was intent. If they are violating one of these, then we have the ability to
Make.
discipline them?
Yes, and make the adjustment based on the violation, not the actual, um, matter of fact, he even mentions in here something about trespassing.
So my question is, how do we make sure that the punishment is equitable?
That's why you hired me, to get with administrators to look at policies to make sure that we're taking those seven things into account. Age of the student, if there's special needs, if there's, um, disadvantage, all of those factors. And then being able to sit down with the parent and having that conversation. Again, I, I would say, depending on if there was destruction, if there was, um, something that was broken, vandalized, you know, if these kids being mischievous and just getting into stuff, that's one thing. But if they're just trying to tear up stuff and it's a cost that comes with it, then that's gonna be a different, uh, a different, uh, consequence for them. I think it was also written to where it wasn't as rigid, so that it gives the opportunity for trying to help kids when they're making kid-like mistakes and error.
So what you're, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. Based on Truun, what you're saying is we're gonna, this final read is actually, we're backtracking and taking H and I back off and keeping it as it already was.
Correct.
So there's no action to be.
There's no action.
Okay. All right.
There's no action to be done. So 5610 is already a current policy.
Yeah.
The process was to amend it and add H and I.
Now we're backtracking and not adding H and I, okay?
All right. Moving on, 5.04 is removed. 5.05, superintendent contract.
Yes.
Just getting it pulled up here.
Oh. Question.
Um, go ahead. If you gotta, if you got something to start with, go ahead, Kevin.
Nope. I just said, you made a comment and I said, yes.
So obviously, when we get to that point, um, everything would have to be looked over. I honestly have not read this word for word. Um, it looks like it was, the dates were changed.
This is the contract that went from.
This is your current contract.
Yes, this is the current. The question that is, there is a questionable extension, which is what previous practice has been, which is an added one year. And there's not in the contract, this sunset clause that is then in other contracts, which says every time it comes up, it just goes another year as added to where it continues to be a three-year contract, but that's not in this contract. Craig and Dawn has been here through the previous superintendent, I think Dawn was here? Previous superintendent that had the same clause that was, uh, practiced. And as far as, um, any type of pay increase, I do not get pay increases as the district gets. It has to be the school board that decides that. So earlier, we talked about the teacher's contract, uh, and Gina talking about the budget, the teachers got a 2%, administrators, everybody except the superintendent because I'm employed by the board.
I looked for this as an attachment earlier today, and I didn't see it on there.
Yeah, it wasn't on there. Uh, Jeff mentioned in the previous meeting when we were in closed session that it was located on Board Docs and that you'd be able to go and see it on Board Docs. However, Brad hasn't been, um, onboarded to where I can show you where those Board Docs are, so my thought was, he hadn't seen it, so I went ahead and put it on there.
What is, what are we being asked to vote on? Or what's the action item on the table with this? So it's, it's negotiation, um, Mr. Simmons has brought. Um, his proposed, which I thought would have been on here too. So again, don't quote me on the wording, but July 2021 through July 2026 is what your original
Correct.
proposal was.
That was a five-year.
Correct. Um, so we have discussed, just, just me personally with, with Kevin. Um, I don't personally think our, our district could fund, um, a five-year contract. I did ask if you'd be willing to go to the traditional one-year rollover. Are we still?
That's correct, you said yes.
Okay. Um, so I think it boils down to, are you, are you willing to ask for a different recommendation?
Yeah, I'd even, right now, because we're, there's so much uncertainty with everything that's going on, even after we kinda talked about the budget, that if it was a 2% based on what the other teachers and district staff is getting, and a one-year that turns over, the only thing I would ask would be the, um, sunset clause that be added, so we wouldn't have to come back every year.
And I personally wouldn't be for that. I think it needs to.
Just keep coming back?
Uh, yeah.
Now, we did address this in December. Just so the new members of the board know, that, um, we did approve a contract in December. So we wouldn't actually be due to do this until next spring?
Well, remember, Abby made clear that because we're in the middle of that pandemic, it usually happens, it's a July the 1st through a June 30 contract. And so she made it a point of saying, okay, I'm sorry, Kevin, we're late by six months, because I thought it was done during the evaluation. And she said, no, Craig would be able to, um, clarify that. So now we're back to July 1st, and the, um, rotation would go back to the way it was with the previous years. So the only reason it was, it was late, we were in the middle of something at the time, and we were, that July was trying to get ready for return to school.
See, and I thought it was due this July, but we did it in December because we had new board members coming on. And you wanted it done with the previous members that worked with you.
Well, it was supposed to be done July the 1st of 2020. But because we're in the middle of a pandemic, I thought that you're only supposed to wait until after the evaluation. And then that's when Abby explained, no, Kevin, we've already done that for you. I said, no, I, I don't remember seeing any contract that said that. So then that's when the discussion was going on, at that July, it happened in December. Was really talking like we were back in June of 2020, when really, we went six months and we were late with saying, Superintendent Simmons, this is an offer for that one-year rollover. So that's why it happened in December, which means this December wouldn't be another one of those conversations.
But you got a significant raise this. But you got a significant raise this December and you, I don't understand why you would get another compensation review without a performance review by this board. Why would this board give you a compensation review if we aren't even able to do a performance review of you when you just got a raise six months ago, not even five months ago, well, I guess it's six months now. Um, I just don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. I feel like, I personally would like to wait until after we do a performance review, especially since you have two years left on this current contract, and current contract or not. If, if we don't update it and if we don't tell you, it automatically rolls over. That's just how contracts work for superintendents.
Oh Craig, then that means this would just be a rollover for another year.
But we don't have to change it legally.
I think what she, correction, okay. I, per our policy, I'm gonna assume where she's getting at is if we get to the ninety-day, and I'm not gonna, please don't quote me on words, but we have a ninety-day, we have to notify somebody if they're, if we're not a hundred percent sure if we're gonna renew their contract. You have ninety days, you have sixty days that is an employee to respond, come to the board, et cetera, et cetera. I, I, I'm assuming, okay.
And there's two years left on this current contract. Is, was my point.
So. So we're, we're going to be looking at Kevin's role in, in the bond. Kevin's role in us recovering from COVID. Kevin's role in terms of developing that team within the district. And also just looking at Kevin from the perspective of a great investment because right now, we're paying him twenty-five thousand dollars less than the average superintendent gets statewide. And I, I see, I see our benefit from giving Kevin that kind of stability and voter confidence coming now as a, as a tradition, we've done it in June. And Dana, I, I understand where you're coming from in terms of your perspective.
Right.
But I, I see that it would be very beneficial for us right now with all the things we've got on our plate to vote for Kevin to get that year extension at least. And I think two percent is, is low. That's, that's a couple thousand dollars. About twenty-three hundred dollars of a, of an increase for someone who's worth at least a hundred and sixty thousand on average statewide. So that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from, in my experiences with two previous superintendents. Is that there's a lot to be said for that type of continuity, especially with the bond coming up, especially with us trying to make sure we can navigate the budgetary issues that could be coming up in the next year or two. So for us to have those type of challenges with Kevin not having a, 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 a contract or, you know, starting to shop somewhere else.
Although he does have a contract until June of twenty-twenty-three.
Oh, I, I understand.
And, and one of the things that Kevin did challenge us with is to look up other contracts and what you're saying doesn't fit the bill. Here's Hastings, they have five hundred students more than us, their superintendent gets paid a hundred and thirty thousand. Here's Lakeview High School, they have double the amount of students that we have and their superintendent, oh gosh. Gets a hundred and fifty-five thousand, double the students that we have. Here's Harper Creek, they have eight hundred students more, their superintendent gets a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Here's Charlotte, they have five hundred more students than they do, than we have and their superintendent is a hundred and three, thirty-three thousand dollars.
Dana, does that include all the other perks that they have?
Yes, absolutely, I've gone through, I've highlighted all of the perks that all of these, this is what challenge, this is what he challenged us to do. I went through and I pulled up school districts that were very similar to ours. Um, I even went to schools that were double our size and I went through and I took the, what he, he asked for and I compared in contrast to every other superintendent and.
So our samples are different?
Yes. And, and well, I mean, these are, these are all in our backyard, Lakewood.
Oh, I, I'm not arguing that, you think our samples are different?
Yeah, I mean, so I, I think that, I mean, if, if, based on what, I, I think he's getting a very fair wage. I think that, I feel like it's very, it makes more sense for, for us as a board to evaluate him before we give him any type of raise. We have, we haven't worked with him long enough to be able to give him a, a performance, performance review without a, excuse me, a, sorry, a compensation review without a performance review. I just, I just don't understand how you can do that.
So if we were to pick out five different rubrics or five different points on which we're to evaluate Kevin, just to touch for a head, have we found that he's communicated effectively or effectively with us or somewhat effectively with us?
I think that's something we go over in the informal.
That, that would be the review.
That's part of the review, I, I don't think that that's something that like, uh, right now that.
We can do off the cuff.
We can do off the cuff, I don't, I think that.
Do you think it's gonna change in, in a couple of months compared with what we've experienced so far? Remember, you've only been on the board for five months.
Yeah, I've been on the board for five months, but I would hope that over the next five to six months that there are some things will change now that the, the life and things were getting back to normal. I would, I would definitely hope things would change, absolutely.
So, so if we're a work in progress now, we'll get to a work in progress five months from now.
But life's going back to where, what we're, what our normal is. We're going back to normal, we're not going back to chaos and a pandemic, we're going back to normal. So going back into the flow should be a lot easier. I'm, I'm not, I don't think that I'm being unreasonable to say that, that I, I think that I just, I just wanna be able to give him a, a performance review first. I don't, I'm not like, it, it's not personal, it's just business. I'm just being fiscally responsible as a steward of my community.
I'd like to know too, where our budget comes in, you know, and that's Wednesday, hopefully Wednesday, right? Where the state's gonna.
Yep.
Cause right now we're looking at.
Yeah.
Two-point-six million deficit, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to our community asking for thirty million dollars, we have a two-point-six million dollar deficit and now we're asking for more, more money, I mean, it's just.
And this is a twenty-two million dollar budget that has seen its days of drop and increase that is not caused by someone being lucky, is someone who has been at this before with budgets to create it in that manner. So I have, there's numerous things that we could go back and forth with. The districts, demographics that you're looking at, it's not demographics like Penfield. You need to look at someone like Frankenmuth, you have to look at someone as of Lang, Langingsburg. You have to look at those districts that have the same demographics, the same type of, and those, the free reduced lunches, those are all the same.
Lakeview has entire buildings on free reduced lunch.
Yeah, but they're not the same demographics. That's what you, that's, so I, I can applaud your going and researching local. But when I'm talking, when I'm talking, I'm talking about districts with the same type of demographics, the same type of fund balance, the same type of student makeup, the community. That's all a part of what Craig was talking about earlier. So I can appreciate the fact that, that research, I've got the ten schools. When we do what our district looks like compared to how the funding goes with the extra counseling that we have in support of the elementary buildings, those are not the districts that we mimic. Those districts, I have a list of ten of them that come up in IDEX that we actually use.
So we're all given examples?
Yeah.
And by the way, thank you very much for a fine budget that has been very balanced for a very long time. Okay, I am not gonna take anything away from you. Yeah.
I'd just like to speak from the perspective of, you know, education in the last eighteen months. It's been rough on everybody and across the nation. You'll see, you know, teachers are getting compensated, a lot of districts in our areas are, you know, rewarding teachers with some extra pay for that, superintendents, you know, bus drivers, everybody went through that and deserves, I think, to be honored for making it through that. So we have to take that into consideration too. I don't look at it as, you know, his job's gonna be easier next year so he doesn't need as much. I think, you know, he got us through that, let's, you know, reward that and, you know, continue to work hard to, you know, get back to normal. Cause we're not, we can't snap back into normal, there's still a lot that has to be done, it's still hard work. Um, and I don't think that the two percent is unreasonable.
Although we did do that in December.
Actually, it was more than two percent, way more than two percent.
Yes, so, again, for clarification, it was late. It was supposed to be done in July, June. It was supposed to be done in June, it was not. So therefore, we didn't do it until December, yes, it was just done, but.
We did make up for it in December, a lot of.
It was, yeah.
The lateness, the COVID, all, if, if we go back through the minutes, those things, you know, I'm just making everyone aware of it.
If you, if you wanna make up for the fact that it was late, even if you wanna say, it, it was over five percent times twice.
I'm not denying that, it was, I was just clarifying the fact of, December keeps getting brought up because he actually got six months of wage. That, that, not reduced, but his same wage when he came here in two thousand nineteen.
Right.
Through January first of twenty-twenty-one. Cause that's when his, the contract date went to July of twenty-twenty, but the pay increase did not start until January first of twenty-twenty-one. So he's only been on this pay scale for five months, six months.
And if we wanted to say from December, look, look at cost of living. A tank of gas costs more than two percent more now than it did in December. You know, we're having that way, so.
Okay, but like, I mean, we couldn't even afford an additional twenty thousand dollars to give all of our teachers a better dental plan that they asked for, but we're gonna do a twenty-one percent increase in December, then another two percent now? Like, what, what about our teachers, what about our teachers that are in the trenches, working sixteen hours a day?
Which is why they got a two percent increase plus a step and goes at the top of the scale, an extra fifteen hundred.
Yeah, but they didn't get the, the dental plan that they wanted. I mean, like, there's other things that they wanted as well that they didn't get.
I agree, Kevin. I think, I think one of the things that I, I've learned Dana over the years is that it's really about over time, and I understand where you're coming from, I really do. But it's over time and in many cases through negotiations that we do make up for the fact that they may or may not have got the dental plan that they wanted. Uh, that, that it can be, that's a, that's a beauty of the negotiations. That that can come up again next year, the year after. And I know it's, it's gonna take, it'll take a few bucks out of everybody's pocket. But it's one of those things that it can, and the board can even pay special notice to it as we go through the next year. So that we'd like to reward our, our teachers with that in coming negotiations. Because they are, they are worth their weight in gold this year. And so I, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I also see that it's, it's, it's a potential way in which we can reward them in the future. I, I see the problem is, is that there's so much uncertainty. And with the uncertainty of having two hundred short, but if we put sixteen hundred dollars we might be getting per trial, might be able to help us then make next year the way of time in which we can start looking at dental again. That's something that we can, that we can say to Kevin, if we really think then that we should be rewarding them for what they've done. I look at two percent from the perspective of someone who hasn't gotten a raise in a long time is, is pretty good. But I, I, like I said, I understand where you're coming from and I just, I just think that this is something where the patience of the board, like when we were dealing with two thousand and eight still and two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fourteen, I mean, the, the district was in a tough way and it was really hard to say to the, to the faculty, we can give you a raise when we didn't know the direction in which the economy is going. So I would really counsel patients in, in this case, that it's something that we can do, maybe it won't be until next year. And I think for, for Kevin, for two percent, that's about two, twenty-three hundred dollars. It's, it's not that much. Two hundred bucks a month for a raise.
Well, could we as a board consider the raise with keeping the contract for June of twenty-twenty-three?
You can consi-, yeah, I mean, you can consider anything, in the long run, whatever is determined by the board, Kevin doesn't have to accept. I mean, that's, that's obvious.
That's negotiation.
Correct.
So since this contract is until twenty-twenty-three, with the board being so divided and needing more information, should, you know, I would make a motion to table this until whenever makes sense, I don't know if it's the. They, we're obviously not ready to decide tonight, I mean.
But we should be, I mean, this has been well-known of an agenda item for two months, at least.
Well, and for me, there's clarification on another issue that, you know, we can't talk about in overtime, so.
I would ask.
I guess you can table anything.
Tim, I would ask that you modify your amendment, uh, your motion to consider, reconsider what type of raise that Kevin might get by extending his contract an extra year on what we have right now. So that we do, we do that as a means of giving him certainty in his ability to plan out. And then after we get done with his evaluation, kind of like Dana was suggesting, then once, once his evaluation is done, we get more concrete evidence, then we can take a look perhaps at his, what his raise might look like.
For me, with the, the resolve, I don't see a reason to go past the twenty-twenty-three, until it's resolved.
I agree with Tim.
Yeah. And that's, that's the whole resolving it.
Yeah, I'm with Tim on this. So I don't know if you need to make a motion to table it until.
I, I definitely gotta be a little more clear, what, what would a good date be? I mean, I, the ball's kind of with the other thousand things you gotta do, Jeff.
We, August?
Mr. Davis, can, can I ask for counsel?
Sure.
Mr. Davis, we're talking about, I'm assuming anything can be tabled.
Sure.
Okay, so we're talking about superintendent's contract.
Yep.
Motion has been made to table it, a date has not been set in the motion. We need to clarify that in a second, it's already been made, so we need to re-go back to the motion.
Table it for consideration at the next board meeting and then at the next board meeting, um, figure out what you're gonna do.
Does that give you time to? I know you were talking to the lawyer.
I can't answer that.
Okay.
I, and not that I can't answer it, but I don't have.
You don't know.
I don't have an answer. I'd like to, but I can't say yes or no.
Gotcha. The ball's in the lawyer's court or?
It's out of my hands.
Okay.
It's out of my hands. Thank you, Ray.
Yep.
Mr. Davis.
Tim, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I just, I need a date for it.
Would you like to put a date on your motion?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I.
Do you want to tell the date?
What is it, August nineteenth or?
I thought the ninth is the committee of the whole, I believe, and, no, the twelfth is the committee of the whole. No, I'm looking at the wrong calendar, ninth is the committee of the whole and the sixteenth is the board meeting of August, ninth and sixteenth.
Say the sixteenth to give it a little more time to work.
Exactly what is it that you are looking for to happen by then that hasn't happened already? Because it's not gonna happen by then either. So exactly, you know, tabling after, I think even the members would like to know exactly what is it that we keep tabling back?
Right.
Because there's not gonna be any time or any difference. It kind of what Craig was saying earlier, when Craig said, what's gonna be different five months from now than what it is now, even with the starting over process, which is something different?
Well, we would have the informal evaluation in July.
And exactly what does an informal look like that hasn't happened over the last two years since I've been here?
Well, none of us.
New members.
Yeah, none of us have been involved, Dawn and Craig are the only ones. And Craig has, has unfortunately, because of health reasons, not been around for like the last three or four months. So unfortunately, we're basically all.
So you do realize that the actual M A S B superintendent tool, the informal is just like the one we just had three months ago, which is right here. The informal is just like the one we just had three months ago, which is right here in front of you. If you look at it, it says on the ninth month, what happens? The actual numbers didn't come until the final evaluation. I know Jay Bennett would be able to share more about the M A S B, but I'll just leave it.
As far as my issue, I just wanna bring it in a professional legal manner. You know, I don't wanna. Just blurt it out there. So I wanna make sure that I'm, I'm doing it the right way. That's all I'm.
Yeah, it's.
Yep.
That's appreciated.
Yeah, and I understand that. Nine months, an informal update, superintendent provides written update to the board. Board president shares with the superintendent any specific concerns or questions from the board. That's the nine month.
And I think that's what needs to happen before the next meeting.
So instead of a formal in six months, you just wanna have an informal?
No.
You want to vote?
In July, I thought we were doing the, we just tabled this till July.
Right.
And I feel like some of that communication can happen over the next month. You know, to proceed with a decision on the contract. I think that the superintendent and board relationship workshop. Would be good to take place before we.
I would agree.
Um, take a vote on this contract as well.
So then it's still open at that time? That when certain details and understanding, a shared understanding of the board's work and the superintendent's work, when we get to that point. That could be asking for more. That'd be fair enough, wouldn't it?
I don't think so. I mean, I, I think it's a relational.
Yeah.
I can, I can tell you.
If we're working together, you know.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
To be working together, that was the purpose of that workshop, so we can be stronger and unified. And I feel like we current, we currently have this till twenty twenty three, and I'm not even saying to wait until then. I'm just saying, let's get a workshop in and some more communication going on and then. Go from there.
Again, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I can tell you this, that Debbie Stare is not available in June.
It's June, July, July.
Well, then he's right.
Yeah.
What about August? Do you know?
I, I don't know. I, I'm, uh.
Is there another?
Can't help but say I'm, I'm, I'm getting very frustrated with it. I mean, we've, we've done this three times now and I'll, I'll keep trying.
I just, I mean, I just, I'm just asking.
I, I know.
I get it. I, I, I get it.
I'll, I'll keep trying.
There is a motion on the floor. Uh, Tim.
Did you make the actual motion?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
For the sixteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Before we vote, I just wanna say that I appreciate Craig being here. Because he's adding a lot to this. Me being brand new, I mean, this is, there's just a lot of new information here. You know, and I think it's important that, I mean, none of us have been here other than Dawn and Craig. A long time and not going to anything lightly with the budget, with the uncertainty. You know, for me, uncertainty means you don't do anything. You don't jump, you wait. Not the opposite. That's me as a farmer, you know, I, I sit tight when I'm not sure, which is pretty much every day. But, uh, I just wanted to add that, um, I asked about Craig earlier before he got here. Got going that you were, I think it was okay with you to come by, like, just to have your experience. Because, you know, other than Dawn, it's just you that's been here since November, you know, or.
Hence my request for the importance of some sort of board retreat workshop, like something to bring us together as a board. For some communication and some team building and, you know, I think that would be super beneficial for our district.
I'd be open to any ideas that you have. And yes, Craig, we've talked a couple of times via email. Um, I very much appreciate you being here. So we have a motion on the table to table the superintendent's contract negotiation. To August sixteenth.
Yep.
Am I correct?
Yep.
We have a second in, second by Dana.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah? No. Craig?
Hey.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
No. Motion passes. Contract tabled. To August sixteenth. Moving right on. Five point oh six, policy thirty-three sixty-two, thirty-three sixty-two oh one. In regards to threatening behavior towards staff members. Um, I have invited Mister Ray Davis from Trune. Um, do you have a letter for us?
I do.
Sir?
I do. President, well, for, for, I have to say thank you for, uh, entertainment and I have to excuse myself.
Thank you, sir. Uh, seven fifty-four P M. Doctor Corporal removes himself. I'm ready for you.
Yeah, so we need a motion and a, uh, second to go into closed session and a second eight H. And, uh, I've got a letter, so we can go into closed session and then, uh, we need a roll call on whether to go into closed session.
Fair enough.
Okay.
And just to be clear, this is for the discussion of the policies to answer the questions that were. Um, asked of me last week.
Policy, policy only.
Policy and not the.
Fallout.
Policy. So I make a motion to, um.
Going to closed session.
Close session with.
Eight H to consider a legal opinion.
I second that.
Go ahead with the roll call.
Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dana?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes. Motion passes. I would ask at this time for everyone to, uh, remove themselves from the room. Other than the six board members, Mister Simmons and Mister Ray Davis.
All right, nice to meet you.
6.01 Finance Expenditure Report. That is an attachment. Kevin, do you have anything?
Nothing to add, sir. Same as each month. We bring it and we share it.
Any questions, concerns, anything? Just for viewing purposes. 7.01 Comments from the public. Do we have any public tonight? Yes, ma'am. Can you come up here in front of the microphone, please? Sorry, we do not have proper paperwork for this evening, so if you could state your name.
Get prepared. Hold on one moment, please.
And as the norm, we allow three minutes.
Sorry, guys. My heart's kind of beating out of my chest right now. I would like to, uh-
Your name, please.
My name is Kimberly Wolpersberger. I'm here as a parent of a student at Penfield High School. I emailed the board about unprofessional conduct that went on at our last board meeting. I like the fierce and I like the bold, but I do not like the unprofessionalism. I contacted the board through email and I was not given proper responses by the board members that I contacted. I also contacted the superintendent and was not received phone calls back within a timely matter. Eventually, I did hear back from most of the board and I do appreciate that. I'm just going to go ahead and read my email. "I would like to know what's going to be done about the board member who made comments about my son." In the same breath, she outed board members' names, made allegations that were all hearsay, and none of them were facts. "I was made very aware that the other board members were trying to keep everybody's personal information private, as a true professional should. Instead, the individuals' names were mentioned." I gave it a while reviewing it, being tempted to reach out to this person personally, and did not get a response. An apology would have been great. Acknowledgement would have been great. But then, sitting back and reviewing the board meeting over and over again, just the mocking of our community is what stands out the most. People's names will be erased. It'll eventually go away, and like this, which I'm sure attempted to be brushed underneath the rug. Took a few notes from earlier and hide behind policies to try to attempt to protect themselves. It is just a shame. Plead yourself a steward of our community, but yet mock our community. Call yourself a steward of our community, but yet mock our community within just a month. Just a shame. If I have more to read, I'm sure my three minutes are up.
You have one minute, ma'am.
Another email I wrote to the board. "I've always been a huge sponsor of Penfield schools. I rarely make us think about anything that's not being done right. When I find a problem, I try to handle it personally. I run a small school, so I understand the challenges that can arrive and they arrive quickly. Our facility aids in the preparation of preparing the next generation of Penfield Panthers. After Monday's board meeting, of not only the unprofessional conduct of this board member, mentioning my son and several other names, but the same board member calling our community 'sissies', and I quote, 'sissies', for coming forward, mentioning a problem that they had felt. They felt as if that they were being bullied and this person calls them a sissy for coming forward."
Can I ask you to wrap it up a little bit?
How insulting. To say the least, I am losing my belief in our system. I have had over two dozen conversations with families who are ready to leave Penfield and I am still trying to get them to not. I still believe in Penfield. But they want to know if this is how adults are treated when they come forward with this type of situation. No wonder our children can't come forward with the same type of situation. To be called names and to be shamed by an adult, by a member, by a board member. How are the children treated, we wonder. Our community is starting to wonder the same thing. I stepped up, as my family did in a crisis, to assist everybody in absolutely anything that we can do in making our community better again. Within just a few hours of a board meeting, I feel it's all crushed and here we are starting over again."
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other comments from the public? Superintendent comments?
Only have one that I've heard from the public also and that would be that we need to rearrange the setup to where instead of having dialogue with each other, that we set up to where we're actually speaking toward and again, depending on if we're moving forward with the cameras or not. That if someone is sitting, instead of me sitting and having this conversation and then not being personal with the people of this community and the public, that July the 12th meeting, we have RFPs coming in from transportation and from custodial. We have the people who... There's quite a few people that are going to show up and that we should move to the auditorium. I would make that recommendation and that we actually line across like you see in other board meetings to where I may turn my head and speak in one direction or the other, but that we're actually making sure that the community can actually understand what we're saying and actually see our faces when we're making these comments. So, I would recommend that based on what I've heard and feedback from some of the people in the community and a couple administrators. Other than that, I have no other comments.
Thank you, sir. 8.02 Is True Law Notes. Attachment is provided. 9.01 Board Comments?
I've got something. I want to address a few things. As you know, I have been cyberbullied recently on Facebook. Unfortunately, this comes along with the position, but I will make a few things clear. First and foremost, I will always be true to who I am. I will be true to my family and I will be true to my community. Some people's interpretation of my comments regarding the state of society are incorrect as they were directed at society in general and not solely toward our community as suggested, as in fact, they were a follow-up to a point earlier in the meeting regarding how society in general can misinterpret verbal statements. I want to take this time to apologize to the president's son for mentioning him in the meeting, but please note, at no time has his name spoken, only his relationship to the president. I should have made my point without referring to a student and I'm happy to make that clarification.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other board comment? Make a motion to adjourn this meeting.